And I am going to let everybody know that we have a public hearing on the agenda for the regional agreement. And that is not going to happen tonight. So the reason being is that the Department of Education of secondary and elementary education, not in that order, have not gotten back to us yet about some of the finer details of the agreement. So we're not ready to bring it to hearing at this point in time. So that should have been stricken from the agenda. It wasn't. I'm sorry for the confusion that that caused, but we are going to bring that forth as soon as we can. And I can give you more of an update later in the subcommittee report. So that said, at six thirty one, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee, and I'm going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So you guys commute and rise if you would like to and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, so the first item on our agenda here is a public comment. At this moment, we do not have any public comments, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I will ask for a motion. Mr. Horish, would you be so kind?
Yes, I can be so kind. Uh, I am going to move to approve the consent agenda of October twenty sixth, two thousand twenty two, containing the minutes of October twelfth, two thousand twenty two, and October nineteenth, two thousand twenty two, uh, the second of two meetings, and the warrants of October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Amy. Any discussion? Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, you're gonna hate me for saying this, but um, the agenda actually has the meeting being called to order at six forty five. We were supposed to be at the public hearing from six thirty to six forty five. So we're way ahead of the game at this point. Um, I think if it were, if if I lived in a perfect world and I ran it, I would probably suggest that we hold off on taking any affirmative votes at this point. And again, if you were looking for a suggestion, which you're not, but I'll give it to you anyways. Maybe we move to the um, chairperson's update and the superintendent's update, then we wait until these six forty five to begin taking any motions at that point.
Okay, so Mike, do you want to rescind your motion?
I will withdraw the motion.
All right, guys, so let's move over to the chairperson's update. Um, really, the only thing and something that I'm happy to share with uh the community and with our committee, that's really my only item here, is to give a heartfelt thank you to Ms. Patricia Maroney and for all of her years of service at the Neshoba Regional School District. She has been um at the helm of our uh business office for, I think you just said about a little under twenty years. It's an awfully long time to help run this big ship. This is actually a really big business and you've done a fantastic job, Pat, and we are so appreciative of all of your years of service. So I just want to stop and say thank you to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat, and congratulations.
Thank you, Pat.
And um, I would like to, although I have no authority to do so, make today October twenty sixth officially Pat Maroney Day.
For our meeting.
Second that.
Yep. So Pat, we are going to definitely miss you. We know that you have um somebody stepping into your shoes who you are, you have trained and and gotten Ross ready to take over, and we're so appreciative of not only all of your service, but um making sure that the district is going to continue to smoothly sail into the next budget season. So thanks again.
You're welcome, and he is ready. He is ready. We made sure of that.
I appreciate, I appreciate your confidence. Now, I was going to hold my comments, but I'll just say it publicly now. Thank you for all of your your tutoring and your knowledge and your patience over the last several months. Um, big shoes to fill, um, but I really appreciate the fact that you've worked hard to help me and support the the district uh in doing so. So thank you, Pat, for everything.
You're welcome. Thank you to all for having me as long.
It's been our pleasure, Pat.
Now, Ms. Maroney, on behalf of the chair and the entire school committee, you should have uh received a bouquet of thanks uh today. Did you receive that?
I did not.
Oh, well, you'll receive it tomorrow. We were hoping it would be there for the meeting tonight uh to show those, but um there's, there's, on behalf of the school committee, we have uh sent a bouquet of loveliness to your home to thank you for those years of service. And today at our leadership council, we also presented Pat with a crystal ball uh to memorialize her time here in Neshoba, so.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, so um let us know uh without objection, as long as you guys are okay with it. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report. We'll return to the consent agenda in just a bit. But Kirk, over to you for announcements and updates on strategic work.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and again, as Ross said, I was going to use this moment to thank Pat. We've already done that, so thanks again, Pat, for the seventh time today. Uh, moving into the superintendent's report. In the superintendent's report, you'll see there is an NAYC update. That is the National Association for the Education of Young Children. This is an accreditation agency for early childhood programs, and we've utilized NAYC over the years, but primarily its function was during a time when we were half-day kindergartens to produce a full-day kindergarten programming, uh you had to be uh certified by NAYC to receive those funds from the state. We no longer participate in that. So uh NAYC as an accredited agent agency doesn't fulfill any requirements for us anymore, and we go through regular auditing processes uh through the Department of Education as well as uh through our special education uh regular audits. So I'm notifying the committee that we will be uh sunsetting our NAYC certifications across our schools as they come due. They're five-year cycles. Um, I think uh Stowe at Center School was the last to actually go through the process last year. Um, but that will be the final time. So in five years, we will not have that accreditation because it's no longer necessary uh for us to do so. Um, and with that, uh Madam Chair, I'm getting so used to our team being so well-prepared for these meetings. Um, I'm gonna bring in Ms. Friend right now to uh talk a little bit about the seal of biliteracy and some of the updates we have on our strategic work. So thank you for your leadership on those efforts, Ms. Friend.
Sure, thank you Superintendent Downing. Right, I'm excited to share that this year we um are going to participate in the State Seal of Biliteracy Program at the Neshoba Regional High School for the first time. The State Seal of Biliteracy Program recognizes students for language proficiency in English and proficiency in a second language. Students of all language backgrounds, including English learners, former English learners, heritage speakers, signers of world language, and students from monolingual English-speaking homes who have acquired world languages at school or in the community are eligible for the State Seal of Biliteracy and the State Seal of Biliteracy with distinction. There are available two recognitions here. One, the State Seal of Biliteracy, and two, the State Steel of Biliteracy with distinction. In terms of criteria, the State Seal of Biliteracy requires a student to meet all graduation requirements, attain a passing score or higher on the tenth grade ELA MCAS, and a score equivalent to or higher than intermediate high on an improved, on an approved world language assessment. The State Seal of Biliteracy with distinction requires a student to earn a score of five hundred and one uh or higher on the grade ten ELA MCAS and a score equivalent to or higher than advanced low on an approved world language assessment. Last Friday, Dr. Boynton sent out a letter to families of all juniors and seniors informing them of our district participation in the State Seal Recognition Program and to solicit initial interest. The district will offer the state-approved world language assessments on site in the spring based on the feedback that we received from families. Students who earn the State Seal or State Seal of Distinction will be formally recognized in the spring and will receive a seal on both their diploma and their transcript. We'd like to acknowledge Dr. Boy- Boynton and her team at the high school, including the World Language Department, who have been spearheading the initiative. We um recognize that they've been working on these plans, and we are looking forward to implementing them in recognition of our students with this rigorous distinction in the spring at graduation. Excited about this.
Thank you for bringing that to us. All right, so on to updates for strategic work. Unless Kirk, do you want us to take questions um on that first, if there are any? I think you're muted, Kirk.
Thank you for that. Um, no, I think we can uh go ahead and move on and discuss uh the updates to strategic work. Um, and again, these are three areas where uh Assistant Superintendent Fran led a group of educators, so I think it is most prudent for her to speak to these items. So Assistant Superintendent Fran, would you mind uh beginning with our MasQ work?
Sure. So our first update is relative to supporting our work um as we work to recognize the efforts of our talented Neshoba staff and support developing leadership capacity amongst our teachers. So our first update speaks to efforts in support of strategic objective number four, and specifically the MasQ Annual Fall Conference held last week at Gillette Stadium. MasQ is the leading technology conference in New England. It's held annually. It's this, this year was the first year in two years where the event was held in person. The event is very well-attended with upwards of over twenty-five-hundred attendees. The conference goals include featuring workshops and presentations on how to leverage technology to enhance teaching and learning with the latest in educational technology. So we are pleased to share that we have three of our Neshoba educators present at MasQ this year. Melissa Foley Prako, who was an English teacher from Neshoba, presented Innovate and Recreate with Project-Based Learning and Design Thinking. Mary Marata, one of our instructional technology specialists, presented two workshops. One, she co-presented with Fayatelli, who was our eighth-grade social studies teacher, and that was entitled Getting Started with Project-Based Learning and Social Studies and the Race to the Presidency, and the second entitled Promoting Creativity with Canva. And the committee will likely remember that Fayatelli will also be presenting at the National Social Studies Conference in Philadelphia this December. So that's up, update relative to topic number one in MasQ.
Go ahead and continue.
All right, I'll go ahead and move on to the second update.
Just real quick, I was at MasQ and got to see um Mary Marata's presentation on Canva. It was probably one of the best-attended sessions in the conference I saw. So it was excellent.
Excellent.
That's wonderful. I was in the room. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I was not able to connect with you, and the energy was infectious in that room. That's great. All right, I'm going to move on to the second update, which is relative to professional development and supporting three of our strategic objectives, and that is strategic objective two, three, and four. Last Friday, we held our first district-wide early release professional development session of the school year. We've included a year-at-a-glance overview for you in the superintendent's report for your reference. So hopefully you'll be able to find that link in there if you've not been able to take a look at it. Learning activities range from professional development to support the implementation of our new math curriculum. That's Bridges in Mathematics to the continued support and development of our educators' skills in integrating social-emotional learning into practice and work to involving curriculum alignment, development, and mapping in grades six through twelve for our content areas and K to twelve for all of our related arts areas. Our curriculum mapping work is supported through a distributive leadership model as it, as the work is being facilitated by teacher leaders. So we have ten curriculum facilitators through grade eight who are leading the work as well as all of our department chairs at the high school who are leading the work in their respective disciplines and departments. We would like to acknowledge the efforts of our teachers and our teacher leaders as they have truly embraced this work wholeheartedly and with an evolved perspective towards visioning of the learning experiences we strive to provide for our students as we think about bringing to, uh bringing in uh to, to life our portrait of a Neshoba graduate competencies in the context of rigorous enrich lessons and units. So we're excited to continue that work as we move forward with our district-wide early release professional development opportunities throughout the school year. And then our third topic is related to uh supporting strategic objective number four uh as we work to acknowledge and recognize the efforts of our talented staff, not only as a means of retaining our highly talented staff as it indicates in strategic initiative number three, but simply reminding our staff that what they do really matters in the lives of our students. And to this end, we've developed a Neshoba Notable Recognition Program. And then a Neshoba Notable Award uh recognition pro- program provides just a simple venue for extending a thank you to Neshoba employees. That's teachers, staff, any employee within the Neshoba Regional School District for supporting our school communities in all ways, great and small. Students, family, staff, and community members can send a Neshoba Notable Award to any Neshoba employee by completing a short and simple form. Employees will receive a certificate that includes a brief explanation from the nominator of why they are Neshoba notable, and there is no limit to the number of Neshoba, Neshoba notable awards an employee may receive. The Neshoba Notable Announcement was shared in last week's Common Weekly Newsletter on Friday, and it will find its way permanently onto our district website. As well, we have flyers posted in each of our schools with QR codes um with a link that any interested student, colleague, parent, or community, community member can snap to access the acknowledgement form. So already we have acknowledgements coming in, and we're excited to get those certificates into inter-office mail for our staff. We know as educators and employees, those small little moments of acknowledgement, personal and private acknowledgement can really go a long way to buoying our spirit and and reminding everyone that what they do really does matter.
That's great. Thanks so much, Laura. That's a fantastic report. Um, the professional development scheme that you have linked there is a, a very uh impressive document with lots of great things planned for the year. Uh, let's go over to Amy.
Thank you. I had a question about the State Seal of Biliteracy. Um, and it sounds like an amazing opportunity for our students, um but I was confused about whether um survey participation is required to participate. Um, I honestly, as a parent, I had missed this email, so I was really glad you brought it up. Um, and I was just a little confused. I was wondering if you could clarify whether students will still be able to participate if they, if their parents don't fill out the survey by October twenty eighth.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so, so the, the solicitation of interest, and that's simply what it was on Friday, was just our first pass at identifying interested families and also to solicit some more information about the potential world language assessments that we'll be offering in the spring. But um please be assured that we'll have multiple announcements and multiple opportunities for students to engage in the program.
Awesome. I figured, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Amy Vessels.
Um, yes, I may have missed this as well because I haven't taken the survey yet either, but um what level of Spanish um does a student need to get to to be able to perform well on those tests?
So that's a great question. Um, I can let you know that if a student is at the AP level and attains a four or five on the AP assessment, that automatically qualifies as the qualifying score for the world language. However, um being uh engaged in an AP class is not a prerequisite for being able to participate in the world language assessment. So, so regards to whether or not a student is in an AP class, they can still participate in taking the assessment to attain one of those qualifying scores.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions about the superintendent's report? Oh, go ahead, Maureen.
Um, I have a question for Superintendent Downing. Um, the NAYC program, would that, when that goes away, will that eliminate the playgroups that are available to families?
Nope, it has nothing to do with that. All the NAYC is is a membership organization that goes through accreditation services. Uh, the playgroup uh program that you're referring to is the Early Childhood Grant uh through early childhood grant money that is not connected to NAYC in any fashion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Well, I have, I have one more about the Neshoba Notables Program. I love the idea of this program. I think it's a great um way to celebrate the educators and just all the staff at Neshoba, but um are, will you be sharing out some of these notables with, outside of um the certificates so that the community is aware of some of the great things our teachers are doing? That's one part of the question. And the second part is, is there a way to nominate somebody anonymously? There is?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you access the form, um, it's optional. You'll see that providing your, providing your name on a certificate isn't optional. Um, I would say that in terms of the first part of the question, we've really embraced the idea of personal and private recognition for our employees as a first step, and I think we'll, we'll assess as we move forward, but um that's, that's our first step. It's personal and private recognition.
Okay.
But even though you know that I'm going to want to shout it from the rooftops, but um staying in my own lane is personal and private. And we know that too praise makes um different uh elicits different feelings of comfort uh in staff members too, and some um and for some, there may be a level of discomfort and a level of public praise, so.
It all makes perfect sense now that you say it, so thank you.
Great. All right, everybody. Thank you, uh Laura, for that great update. Thank you, Kirk. Um, so again, guys, uh let's circle back now to excuse me, the consent agenda so that we can um take care of that matter of business. And I'll go back to Mike for uh re-motioning.
All right, I will remove to approve the consent agenda of October twenty sixth, two thousand twenty-two, containing the meeting minutes of October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting number two, and the warrants of October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second, again, second time.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll. I vote yes. Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, let's see here. Mike?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Brett?
I'm staying.
Okay. Um, all right, so let's move back down to new business. We have uh here on the agenda a first reading of the NRSD Regional Agreement. As I said earlier in the meeting, um that agreement is not yet tossed back to us from Desi, so the timeline that I was so hopeful about has been delayed. A new timeline will be laid out um in the coming weeks. Um, so we'll just strike that from the agenda, and people can note that we will do that at some date in the future. Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, in regards to the the regional school agreement and the scheduled public hearing, oh, let me get my hand down. I'm just would suggest to the chair that next time around that it, it is appropriate that when the district is going to hold a public hearing, that a separate notice in regards to the public hearing be issued. In this particular case, it was my understanding that the public, the public notice hearing was embedded into the agenda, but a proper public hearing notice would include not only date, time, and location for the hearing, but a brief description of what is going to be, what, for what the committee will be soliciting testimony in regards to. In addition to that, there would be a reference to where, if it's going to be, we're going to be deliberating or taking testimony with regards to the regional school agreement, where interested parties would be able to source or locate the final version of the, the document. Um, it's similar to what we do when regards to um school choice. We generally issue a separate notice on a public hearing for school choice where we cite, where we cite the statutory authority relative to the um, to the school choice law. Same should hold true for a public hearing in regards to the regional school agreement. There should have been, there should be a separate notice, and again, with all the information I just said uh contained therein. Uh, in addition to that, I, I would ask the chair respectfully to perhaps uh in advance of the public hearing, lay out for not only the members of the committee, but for the public as well, the ground rules for the public hearing. I, I don't know what the chair had in mind. I had envisioned that there would be a presentment by the uh, the advisory committee as a proponent of the amendments and that, that people could speak in favor of it, and then it would be somebody who want to speak against it. Uh, but regardless of how you want to do it, I, I do think that the establishment of some ground rules either at the time of the public hearing or before the public hearing would be, be warranted. The third point is, is that I'm looking at the agenda tonight, and of course, if we had gotten the um the, the remarks back from DESC and the approval back from DESC, the way the agenda was crafted tonight was we had a public hearing first, and then later in the agenda, we were having what's called, at least on the agenda, a first reading of the, of the, the, the agreement. I, I would suggest respectfully that that should, that sequence should be reversed in that the, the committee, the, the revised agreement in, still in final draft form, should come to the committee for, for an initial review, then a public hearing held, and then thereafter, there would be deliberation by the committee after soliciting public testimony as to the approval or disapproval or amendments to the, to the agreement. I know that's a, that's a lot to, to digest in, in one conversation, Madam Chair, but um minimally, I do think that the um, the uh the notice should be separate, and there should be a link or some reference to where people can go and find that document as part the notice should be separate and there should be a link or some reference to where people can go and find that document as part of the notice in the public hearing.
Um, yes, so thanks, Joe. Uh, all of that would have been done had Desi gotten back to us. It was all supposed to be removed from the agenda. So, um, it just wasn't. But uh, with regard to the order that you're suggesting, we aren't going to do it that way only because this is what Desi recommended that we do, that we hold a public hearing first. And then because this is really up to the school committee to approve and recommend to the towns, um, the hearing is really just a courtesy. It's not required by law, uh, like the other hearings you're referring to. And so the hearing is meant just as a courtesy to the public so that um, when the version comes back that Desi is comfortable with and that our lawyers are comfortable with, the version will be put out to the public. The public can come and weigh in. I will let you guys all know, if you didn't know this already, that the version we have to put before you is radically different. It's not going to be kind of a redlined version because it's just not anywhere near the same. So um, we will share with the committee, there'll be a cover sheet that outlines all the differences that will also be provided for the town um, meetings. So yeah, there's a whole process that um, the subcommittee has worked pretty hard on to institute. I wish I'd just taken it off the agenda for tonight, so we just missed it, and uh, it'll come back to you at a later date. Could I, but we will, we'll make a separate notice for the hearing next time.
But could I ask a clarifying question about that, Madam Chair? Just so, yeah. So, a- and I understand that there may need to be no statutory authority for the scheduling of public hearing relative to this. I would suggest regardless that if we are going to hold a public hearing, that the same standards and procedures should apply, but more to my point, would it, so I just, so I'm clear, would it not, or is it the intent of the of the chair to at least assure that the committee members have the the final draft for review, whether it's provided as part of meeting materials or um, provided separate therefrom in advance of a public hearing? Because it it strikes me that if, okay.
It'll be in the meeting materials.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. Um, alright, so regional agreement aside, uh, let's very quickly turn toward the Stow Town Charter item here. I want to know from the Stow delegation, did anybody spend any time or does anybody have? And I guess it would just be you and uh, Maureen and me. Is there anything that you would like to put forth about the Stow Charter Review Committee? Put forth?
Did, were we, was that by today? Did we have to do that by today?
Um, you don't necessarily have to by today. If it's, if it's something that you would like to bring, um, if it's something that you think we should require a separate subcommittee or advisory to be sent over to their committee, we can do that. Um, or if you just like more time, I think that the deadline is at the end of November.
I glanced at it, but I didn't really go into detail, so that's why I was wondering if it was due today, but I can, I can look at it a little more.
Okay.
See.
Yep, that's totally fine. I think that there's really um, very little in the Stow Charter that actually circumvents the regional agreement, and much of the charter points toward the regional agreement as a governing document. Um, there's only one thing that I want to consider, and this actually uh, is relevant for the entire school committee. And that is changing the language around when our terms start and when they end. And I'm happy to take any um, comments with me on this. Lancaster and Bolton do not have any language in place that I could find that articulates. I mean, they don't have town charters that I know of, but their bylaws are, seem to be silent on the term. And so Stow's charter is, says that the our terms shall start the day after the election. As long as the election happens after the dissolution of the public meeting, the town, all-town meeting. And so I would suggest that we revise that language to have our terms begin with our organizational meeting, which will be called at some point in June. Many people might ask, what does it matter? But for a school committee, and and with much of the business that we do happening in the last couple of weeks of May, and sometimes into the first week of June, including the superintendent's evaluation, I think that keeping the integrity of the current committee intact until that important business is done makes sense. And in talking with Desi and with our attorneys, they saw no reason why we couldn't do that other than the Stow Town Charter's language around our term start date. Um, so go ahead, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. The only comment I would have is that I have no comment. I I would take the position that whatever the town of Stow decides as far as its own town charter is concerned, that's up to the town of Stow. It's, there's no requirement that um, you know, that the the three communities harmonize the the language in their own town charters or their town ordinances and regulations relative to when their elected officials may begin their duties, so. I I would, just one non-Stow resident, I would find it untoward for anyone not of the Stow residency to be commenting on this. As I would find it the same if we were doing the same in Lancaster and we were taking, soliciting uh, input from non-residents, I would look that as untoward. So I say, do whatever you want to do, has no bearing to what we do in Lancaster or in Bolton.
So I appreciate that, Joe. I just wish that my hopes and dreams for the regional agreement first reading could have come true tonight because there is language in the regional agreement that would do the same. That would have, because Lancaster and Bolton are silent on this matter, to, from what my reach, research can show me, the regional agreement would take precedence in identifying our term dates.
Um, my only question on that is, should it be later in June? Should it be the full school year rather than um, June first? Because it do, it does seem like a lot happens at the end of the year, and you wouldn't really want to transfer at that point.
Yeah, so we normally, the way that um, our policies are written, this Nishoba School Committee holds an organizational meeting to be held at some point in June, is basically what it says. Um, and at that organizational meeting, we elect our new leadership annually. And that is why um, new people coming on board, it makes sense that that would be their first meeting. And that does need to happen uh, for a variety of reasons, to set the calendar of dates for the next school year, to set our August workshop. And so, you know, we would perhaps have the organizational meeting as late as June fifteenth or June tenth, whatever makes sense to the committee at that time. And um, welcome new people on at that point.
Got it. Yeah, that makes sense, man.
I agree. I mean, I came on in June before, like, what the, my first meeting was when you voted on the superintendent's evaluation. And I didn't vote on that because I didn't think it was appropriate, because I hadn't, I hadn't been there for any of it. Um, so I I agree to do it after, I think that vote on the superintendent's evaluation would make sense.
Meaning. And you know, the um, the flip side of your experience, Amy, is that Mary kind of rolled off the committee prematurely, in in my opinion. And because she was the chair of the personnel, or I was the chair of the Personnel Subcommittee, but she was doing a lot of the work around the superintendent's evaluation, we actually had to set the evaluation date kind of arbitrarily early, which then created a whole host of issues for Kirk and his ability to demonstrate effectiveness. You know, a month and a half before the school year is over. And so there's this whole uh, you know, domino effect of our terms starting randomly in the middle of May. And so the regional agreement language that you guys will eventually see would require that terms begin with the organizational meeting. They begin and end with the organizational meeting. And um, Stow's charter is um, currently superseding that. So that is the only language change that I would recommend the charter make, the charter subcommittee make, and then um, it would certainly be up to the townspeople to decide. Any other um, things you'd like to weigh in on that? Alright, so we'll see that uh, move forward over the next couple of meetings, no doubt, as we bring this forward. Without further ado, I'm going to turn it back over to the um, woman of the hour. Pat Maroney has our business operations, um, many, many uh, reports and updates for us. Take it away, Pat. Oh, you're muted on us.
I thought I hit that. Sorry about that. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so this is the um, fiscal year twenty-two results of operation as of the end of the year, six thirty to twenty twenty-two. Um, as you can see, um, we landed just where I would have liked us to land, um, putting that one point two million dollars back into E and D. Um, we had a lot of help along the way this year, um, this past year with that um, holiday on the insurance premiums. And um, some students um, special education that aged out, um, according, you know, um, to um, what was budgeted for. And um, a couple of salary savings um, from hiring um, of the replacement of retirees and so on. And it also helped to cover some of our deficits that we encountered because of facilities issues and um, substitutes for those who um, took long-term leaves and uh, for maternity leaves or whatever their medical needs might have been. So does anybody have any particular questions about year end? Um, I'd be glad to answer them.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Pat. Um, it it used to be when um, when when Brooke was here, Brooke Clenchey, she used to talk about the hamster wheel of E and D, right? And in
That's correct.
And you know, this need to give ourselves a little bit more of a cushion with E and D rather than relying on it to help to support um, the current budget. It looked like last year for F Y twenty-three, we appropriated uh, one point two million dollars from E and D. And it looks like we um, had one point two, four, five left over, so we're, like you said, just where we landed. Um, so I'm I'm, might not be right here, but it feels like we are appropriating money from E and D as a cushion, and then we realized that we don't need that cushion or that um, you know, there's just as much left over in the end. So I guess, as you're kind of parting, can you make any suggestions about how we can get ourselves off of this reliance on E and D only to return the exact same amount into E and D at the end of the fiscal year?
Well, um, after sharing this report, I'm al- also going to share the revenue report, which is going to show that we had a surplus in revenue as well. The only way to get us off of this hamster wheel and have us build up a balance that is comfortable to take us through that rainy day that is, has unforeseen expenditures, is to reduce the amount that we use as a revenue source in our budget. Um, if i- if nobody has any questions with this particular page, um, of the expenditures, I'll show the um, revenue side, I accept that. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, as you can see, we um, had a surplus of a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars in revenue as well. Despite the fact that regional transportation and reimbursement did not come in at what the state had originally promised it would. Um, there are a couple of different factors involved there, and um, it's, it's our ridership, for one thing. Is, you know, um, if we're transporting students closer to their home, they're not transferred over a mile and a half, so we don't get reimbursed for them. So there's a a number of factors that are um, that affect what we get in revenue for regional transportation. But the biggest one was the fact that the state had been promising and promising this unf- unfunded mandate was going to come to fruition, that they were going to fully fund it, and they just didn't. They still just stated they're conservative, I think it was eighty percent. Um, and we were expecting ninety to ninety-five. Medicaid um, finally did its catch-up over the pandemic. And there were a lot of services that were provided and not provided during that time period, but when the kids came back, they were, the services that they were provided were robust as, as Joan would say. And um, we received reimbursement based on many of those um, medical or therapeutic related therapies that they they um, provide in our district. Um, other miscellaneous revenue is kind of a catch-all. There's a revenues, um, sale of surplus uh, equipment. Um, as you, you know, that's kind of a catch-all of everything that we get um, in for anything from refunds to um, the cost of somebody replacing, replacing a badge. Not that there are that many people doing that, but it's kind of a catch-all for all small things. Um, earnings on investments, we took a big hit on that this year. Um, as you all know, from your own bank accounts, as personal bank accounts, we all took a hit there. Um, we, it it seems like um, brighter days are ahead in that respect, so I'm I'm very optimistic on what will happen in um, two thousand twenty-three. Now, as far as E and D, these are two major components that go into E and D. Also, one other component that um, bumps up E and D is at the end of the year, we encumber a lot of things. There are anticipated expenditures that um, we've already contracted with or um, we anticipate their services are going to, when the bills come in for those services, we will be spending that money. Well, that's another contributing factor too, that could be anywhere from fifty to seventy-five thousand, which would also reduce our E and D. So um, that being said, um, and I'd like to talk about E and D, which I was unable to submit all the paperwork to the Department of um, Local Services today, which is where I would um, submit all the paperwork for E and D certification. Uh, because their entire network was down, they didn't have any phones working, and you couldn't get into their portal. So they tweeted out that they were having technical difficulties. So otherwise, that paperwork would have been submitted this morning. Um, I had um, discussed this with Ross about saying that I was going to try to do it all the way up until tonight. Still, I couldn't get in. But I can tell you that we will certify more than one point two million going forward, which is a good thing. It doesn't, that doesn't get us off the hamster wheel. Like I said, the best way to get us off the hamster wheel is to reduce it by a hundred thousand or two hundred, or whatever you can afford to do. And again, you're not going to know what that is until during budget season, you receive your chapter fund, uh, chapter seventy funding. So this is where we landed as far as um, things that directly affect E and D. Um, the last, the next report that I'd like to put out to you is the um, revolving. Does anybody have any question on this?
Yeah, Kirk wants to jump in. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to come back to uh, Mr. Harush's question. You know, to to get off the hamster wheel of E and D, it really examines what's the educational program that we're purchasing, and what are our revenue lines that help us get to that? So when we get into the budget workshop, we're going to look at what the education So when we get into the budget workshop, we're going to look at what the educational program is, what the cost of that is. And if we want to take a look at how to get off of the essentially, you know, the way we sort of use E and D to subsidize the budget, we're going to have to talk about programming. Because we're, we have to pay for what we desire in in the educational program. So I actually had a conversation with Mr. McCarron about this today. We're going to be working closely with Budget and Warrant on educating our community, both in E and D and OPEC this year through the budget process. And so we look forward to working together with you in the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee on those issues.
Great. Alright, so Pat, you want to keep going?
I'll keep going. And let's see, let me scroll up on this. This is the report of the year-end fund balances for each of our revolving funds. So it'll give you an idea of what is left in each one of these accounts. I'll just, I'm just going to scroll down slowly. If anything catches your eye and you want to talk about what it is and what what the funds are used for, and if we use offsets in the budget, that's fine. I'm going to fast shout out. Does anybody, as far as the regular revolving accounts, which I've just come to the end of, does anybody have any questions about anything in that particular grouping? Oh, this is the Yep, oh, I'm sorry.
Quick questions, that's alright. I just wonder, could you just explain to us what the revolving account called E-Rate is?
E-Rate. That is funding that we receive based on our expenditures from the private year, the prior year on things like our T-one lines, which are, you know, our internet access lines, certain kinds of connection devices that are in in the schools. So if we, some of that money is in, like, some of those expenditures are in cheese budget, but we don't get reimbursed for them until the following year. And there's a whole process, and we don't get a hundred percent. We get like a certain percentage, and it's based on student population and everything. It's it's that little charge that everybody gets on their cellphone. You know, that says libraries and something else. All that money that's collected from everybody across the country, the federal government then doles it out to the schools and the libraries, and that's what E-Rate is. We get a little piece of that.
Fantastic.
So we usually get, it's offset in our budget every year. Based on what we anticipate we will be reimbursed for. So we anticipated a little less than eighty-eight thousand this year, but we have to spend all of it in the year that the money is distributed. Otherwise, you can't use it. So and they'll reduce that E and D by it. Basically.
Okay, let's go over to Mike.
Pat, I'm wondering if it would be instructive to go back a little bit further and just
Sure.
For the sake, I don't mean like back in the document. Just to maybe give a brief description of what a revolving fund is. So that maybe people can have a better sense of what it is that we're looking at.
Revolving funds are established based on a need for for accounting for expenditures and revenues, where the expenditures will offset the use of those revenues. So in the, if you just want to pick one, even a gift account.
What about the turf? Maybe look at the turf one?
That, that one has been sitting there for a while. That was a donation that was made. Let's see where that is. Some time ago, during the, just after the construction of the turf field. Do you remember where? Oh, here it is. So there has been some money spent out out of that, and it can only be spent on things for the turf field. Like things beyond the budget.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I know that there are some new members here, and I thought it would be important to make sure that everyone knew what it is that we were looking at. So it's fine for me. I guess if there are others that have questions, that would be the time to ask. But yes, thank you.
And there's also gift accounts sprinkled in here from each one of the schools has a gift account. Somebody makes a donation. And the, some of them have specific, you know, here's a hundred dollars to buy art supplies. Well, the principal would then buy a hundred dollars worth of art supplies. The money would come in through the revolving account, and the expenditure would go through the revolving account, so to zero. So that's the type of thing that goes through these accounts.
Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. My question is also kind of for the benefit of folks who might want to dive deeper into the budget and want to be able to find this information with is this, I know it's shared with the school committee, and it's housed in our meeting materials. Is there anywhere else that someone would be able to find the year-end revolving fund report on the website?
I don't know that it was posted last year. Not for fiscal year twenty-one, but this this is posted, obviously. With this meeting. This is only usually post, I only do this report once a year.
Okay, so it's, it would be in with meeting materials in October of every year theoretically?
Probably, either late September or October.
Okay, thank you.
I do think this, though, goes to the Communication Subcommittee's goal of creating a warehouse of sorts by topic, so that people don't have to go scouring through meeting materials over decades to see the history of this. So, you know, whether the district thinks it's prudent to collect these things in a more organized way, or the committee does, I think it's useful to have them all in one place, to your point, Amy.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at, because I know that all this information is out there, but sometimes it's hard to, even for me, to find it. Once I, I know I've seen it in the school committee meeting, but it's like, I don't really remember which meeting. So it's it's not it's not that accessible.
Okay, let's go over to Maureen.
So my question is, these revolving accounts, this is completely separate from the budget, because it's money that's coming into the account and needs to be spent on a specific purpose, whenever that may be. It can, and it can be carried over from year to year. Is that correct?
Okay. Correct. Just like, there aren't any restrictions on spending the money for this, like there are for the budget, like goods, services that are purchased or that happen after six thirty on a given, in a given year. Say, in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. We can't spend twenty twenty-three money on a service that happens in twenty twenty-two. There's a definite distinction between the two fiscal years and how money can be spent. And that's only for our general fund, which is our one hundred fund.
Okay. And are there any restrictions or requirements for reporting to people on like how the money was spent? For example, like if it is a gift, do you then tell them how it was spent, or is that not necessary?
If they request, we give them that information.
Okay.
And at any point in time, if somebody wants to know how the money was spent, we would give them that information. It's not something that we say we don't have to tell you or anything like that. It's not very transparent in regards to that.
Yeah, it's like, it's recorded, and you can go back at any time.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Great. Alright, let's keep the train rolling, Pat.
So there's another fund of revolving funds that's directly related to athletics. It would be your gate receipts, which is your athletic revolving expense. This also houses the offset to the track and field debt. That's what that twenty-five thousand is. And the high school user fees and the middle school user fees, and there are a couple of other revolving funds specific to athletics that there are some funds, as you can see the names.
Yes, but it's not regarding athletic revolving funds. I was, I think I was either scrolling ahead or behind of where Pat is.
Alright, well, any questions on the athletic revolving funds? Alright, let's keep going. Oh, I'm sorry, Maureen, was that on the athletics?
It's sort of related to athletics. It like, can you create a revolving fund whenever something new starts? Like, I know that dances happen every year, but like, say, dances are brand new. Would you create like the revolving fund for money you charge to get in to the dance? Would that be like something that you could create and then use on future ones?
Typically not, unless it came under the under the athletic director. I mean, Kirk, if I'm speaking wrong about that, if it was considered an athletic event, I don't know if it would belong under athletics or the arts. I mean, I don't know. And again, if you establish your new revolving account, you have to come before school committee.
Okay.
arbitrarily set up an revolving account.
Got it, okay.
Just that was my call.
Right. Alright, and then next.
School nutrition and the extended learning. School nutrition program is pretty much a self-sufficient program. It does have a fund balance that we carry from year to year. Right now, the total fund balance for the school nutrition program is six hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-three, and it's the highest it's been. And it's because of really high participation with free lunch, because we still get reimbursed for free lunch. In this situation, they encourage that you spend the money to improve your programs. There's a plan in place that Ross is working with the director of the food nutrition to spend down some of those funds, and he may want to speak about that when his time comes. When, when the food nutrition director comes and speaks of his program.
So can you just clarify quickly, Pat? These are no longer revolving funds. These are actually budget, these are budgeted items, right?
We, we have them create a budget for their program.
So it's separate from?
Separate.
That's so, that's so interesting. Why do we take the nutrition program outside of the budget?
Because it's federally funded. It's considered a grant, actually. But it's such a huge program, and the money comes in based on participation in the program. So typically, it's, it's accounted for this way.
And is that just because of the federal reimbursement? If that were to go away, would you tuck it back into the budget?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I wouldn't know. I'd have to take some advisement on that.
I see. Amy, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm a little confused now that I'm looking at the school nutrition and extended learning costs, but my question wasn't regarding that. Can I, can I ask more than one here?
Yes.
This is showing that the, showing red for cafeteria receipts in school lunch. Am I reading? There's like one point seven that's shown in red on the left-hand side, but then in black over here.
Well, revenues are typically posted as a negative. It's a credit in accounting, in the accounting world. So in order for these numbers to work, this is the way I have to present it in this report. This is his, his budget is in the first column. And then the revenue offsets the budget.
I get it now. Thank you. I had it flipped in my mind, and the red was confusing me. Okay, so my, my question had to do with insurance recovery expenses and school choice revolving.
Insurance recovery expenditures would be if, if say, one of the vehicles was in an accident, we knew that we would be responsible for paying a thousand dollars if that was our deductible. Well, when we paid the bill for the, for the repair, the insurance company would then reimburse us. A thousand dollars would be expended to the budget. And then the, the money that came in from the insurance company would be offset by the expenditure that was charged to the revolving. Has to come back to zero.
Okay, I see that now. That makes sense. Thank you. And then the last question I had was with school choice. Is this showing that we we had more students opting to choose a different district that we were paying out to than we?
No, this is the revenue coming in. That one hundred thousand is the offset that I use in the budget for health insurance. You can offset school choice revenues anywhere in the budget. For us, I mean, it's, it's to cover teachers' costs and whatever, and that's one of the biggest teaching costs that we have besides their salaries. So to offset, you know, health insurance, it seems to me to be the best place to put it. That one fifty-four, six ninety, six ninety-five is the revenue that we took in last year. And there was a balance from the previous year, because I have to estimate what the money is going to be year to year. And they're always a year behind. So like, I would anticipate that this year, we're going to have a hundred and twenty-two thousand left in this account. And I had to kind of figure that out in my mind. It's actually twenty-two thousand dollars more, because we we sometimes get additional funding for special ed students. Students that receive special ed services, we get, we do get some additional money besides the five thousand that they give us for the other the other regular ed students. So that's why you may see a difference there.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, moving on.
And extended learning program, though it was in smaller program than we've experienced in the past. Budget versus actual was very good this year. I anticipate that going forward, this program will continue to grow. We, we had seventy-nine thousand dollars to the good. That's this number right here. Net revenues and expenditures, the fund balance that was in the account from the previous year, it's a hundred and twenty-four, seven, fourteen, thirteen. It was actually sitting there for a couple of years. So you add the two together, even though it was an abbreviated program, we did make a little bit of money off of that. But we're not in the business of making money. These, this money has to sit here for startup costs for the program. I don't want anybody to think that that's, we're trying to fund the budget with the extended learning program. That's, that's not what's happening. What's happening is the program was smaller. I offset some of the expenditures in, in the budget. As you can see, I budgeted seventy-five, and I only charged them fifty based, it was a conservative offset based on what they took in for revenues. Typically, they would take as much as a hundred and fifty thousand in utilities. Um, insurance costs for the building. Um, and health insurance costs. For the people that work there. That this needs to be self supporting and it continues to be.
That's great. Amy, is that a question for extended learning? Oh, old hand. Keep going, Pat.
Student activities, these are the balances. That are left in each of the student activity funds at year end. Think they're pretty good. And. I've also provided to go along with this, a list of. Um, proposed clubs and activities for the school year as an audit requirement. Um, we have to bring the list of activities that whether they're funded. Through student activities or just happened in their buildings, we have to bring them before the school committee. So that you're aware of it. It's an information only type of. Um, presentation. It doesn't have to be voted. Um. Uh, we have an audit. Of two schools. Every year. So there's a continuous audit of student activities. Going on every year. So um, last year, um, fiscal year twenty, we did Mary Rollinson and the high school. We're working on Luther Burbank and IP Center School this year. To the center of Florence. So I can't remember off the top of my head, but and then we'll also um, going forward, we'll do the remaining two schools.
Great. Go ahead, Maureen.
So the student activity. Um, revolving. Accounts are built from like the fees that have to be paid when a student joins a club.
Exactly. They're, they're funds raised by the students for the students. So anything that happens from these funds, these are all, this is all money that's raised by them. In their organizations. Or in the, when somebody collects money for a field trip. Field trips are in the elementary schools, the lower grades, you'll see more field trips. So a teacher collects money for a field trip. It's a hundred and ten dollars to send all the kids. I wish it was that cheap, but that's not true. Um, a hundred and ten dollars, um, they have to account for the hundred and ten dollars. Um, and. In, in the process through the treasurer's office, and then when they pay the bill to go wherever they're going, whether it's pick apples or whatever. Then the expenditure would go through their, their student activity fund.
Okay.
At the purview of the principal of the school.
And that this is the balance that's sitting in those accounts right now to be used for those activities. This year or at any point in the future?
This is the year end balance. And. The year end balance um, is reflective. I mean, it goes up and down. It may be as much as two hundred and twenty five thousand. In a, in the high school at any given time, and then after their proms happen and all the dances, the money goes down. You know, because they raise all this money for all these events all year, and then at the end they paid all the bills, so.
Okay. So this is the year end after school ended last year?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, this is not restricted by the date of six thirty, like the general fund is. There could still be some bills that had to be paid in July and August that wouldn't be reflected here.
And some of these are um. Like class dues, which are.
Last dues.
Large, and they pay for all of the things that the kids do out throughout, throughout their four years, which is why the high school one, I assume, is so large.
Right. They're usually the largest. And Sawyer, where they, Sawyer has more students than some of the other schools, so theirs is a little bit higher, too.
Great. All right, fantastic. I don't see any hands, so maybe we'll keep going.
I, I think that's it.
Unless that is it, Pat. The last hurrah.
That's it.
Well, fantastic. We really appreciate all of that. That's obviously.
A lot of information. I hope I didn't put anybody to sleep.
No, certainly not. It was, uh, it's fascinating. Appreciate it.
And um, next is um, Ross. Ross is going to present September, uh, July through September.
All right, over to.
Let me see if I can unshare.
Mr. Malcaren.
Great. Thank you, Pat. I'm going to pull up my screen share. And just move. The committee so I can see my screen. Okay. So thank you, everyone, and obviously, uh, thank you to Pat for her. Uh, support for me in creating this report. We also um. Presented this to Budget and Warrant Subcommittee last night, um, and they asked some questions that are going to help me uh, frame my presentation as well here today. So this looks very similar to the final results of operations report for FY twenty two that Pat started. Her presentation with, um, with a couple of, of differences. So uh, I'm just going to walk through the columns here. Uh, as a starting point. Uh, obviously, this is July through September, um, which July and August, uh, there's not necessarily school happening. Um, however, we are encumbering and expending things in anticipation of starting the school year. And then obviously, beginning in September, um, that's when our payroll uh, begins for, for most of our staff. Um, however, at the end of September, as of September thirtieth. Um, there's still some unknowns, um, and so I'll walk through a couple of those things as well as we, we, we think about our projected expenditures. So this is all under general ledger, um, under our, um, our, our voted budget. So not, this does not include any of those revolving. Or donation accounts uh, that Pat also presented. Uh, this is strictly the voted budget. Um, and how it is um, coming to fruition throughout the school year. So the description columns are our major accounts uh, in the district for the general ledger. The second column here, the GL budget is our general ledger budget, as I said, and if you look down at the bottom, that sixty two million is the voted. Um, budget for this school year. Total expended and encumbered, so that's what's already been captured uh, through expenses and through encumbrances. That we might put into place um, through our systems. Projected expenditures is where I have to do the bulk of my work, and again, Pat has been super helpful in understanding this product, process. And the budget verse actual is really to give us an understanding of where may we land at the end of this school year based on what we know today. Or in this case, at the end of September. At the very bottom, you'll see the totals for each of those columns. Um, which will uh, take the general ledger budget. Um, and then we are looking at what we've already expended and encumbered, and then taking off what our expected. Um, expenditures are going to be projected, and then the result is our budget verse actual. So where we are as of September thirtieth. And this is very similar to what Pat was talking about, obviously, in her report where that, that bottom line number there is what's. Um, uh, our E and D. What we've added this year, uh, for those who've been on the committee, the, the difference this year in our presentation of this information is that we're going to capture. The last financial fiscal year at, as a second row underneath. So what did this snapshot of the budget look like in the previous year? So we'll have an indication of sort of uh, what the differences are as we move along. Um, and as you can see, you're probably already looking at this, our, our final number here is very similar. Um. As we look through each of these, and again, thank you to Pat for helping me um, understand the best way to process, especially at the end of September. Um, where the school year is really just begun. So you'll see some accounts where, where projected expenditures um. Are at a place where our, our budget verse actual ends up being uh, without a difference. It's a zero. So. Insurance and benefits, people are still um, being hired in the district during the month of September. I know the educators in the committee understand the job market based on the schools that they work in, and I think our committee as a, as a whole has an understanding of the challenges. Of the educator job market uh, this year in particular, and September was still being impacted. So we didn't have a full picture and do not have a full picture on September thirtieth. As to where our insurance and benefits are going to land, but we'll have a better picture as we move throughout the school year. So we're expecting. That we're going to, we're going to use all of our um, general ledger budget for that, that area. Also substitutes, this is daily subs, and this is also long term subs. The end of September really doesn't give us a full picture of that, so we're expecting that we're going to use all of that this year. Also athletics, um, you know, this goes into. Not just um, coaches stipends, but also is referee fees, things like that. So we're expecting, uh, you know, again, beginning of September. Athletics are getting going, so by the end of September, we're not going to have a full picture of what the year is going to look like uh, for that department. So we're expecting that to, to be expended. Where you see any um, sort of negative amounts where we're expecting that we're going to um, have a deficit in that account area. Um, a lot of those are typically atta- attached to salaries. In the sense that in some places this year, and as you're aware, we made some um. Personnel moves over the very end of the spring and into the summer, um, where people moved within the district. Um, myself included officially. So those are typically what's happening there. As are some of these uh, accounts. These lines that are going to be in surplus, projected to be in surplus because like Pat said earlier, when she was talking about end of year. Operations, we are typically replacing retirees. Um, when we hire, a lot of those new employees end up being lower on the steps and on the salary scale. So there ends up being a differential between what we plan to pay that person who ended up retiring and what the new hire. Um, comes in it as a um, a salary. Uh, a couple of the other things are going to be impacted by the current market conditions. Um, an easy one is district technology. Uh, that department does a great job of planning, and they do a lot of their encumbering and expending over the summer. Um, in whether it's um, purchasing equipment or making sure that we're, we're creating the POs. Um, for our services. But again, that's going to be impacted by market conditions uh, with inflation um, and, and things to that effect. Obviously, facilities is going to be impacted. Currently, this projected expenditures reflects the increase in oil. Um, that we've already locked in. Some other things are going to be um. Changing throughout the year. Propane is one of those. Um, propane will flex throughout the year, so we cannot quite yet know uh, what's that, what that's going to do until we start to refill those tanks. Um. With, with a company that we have the um, agreement with. So overall, um, this is where we're at. Again, at the end of September. We don't have all of our, at least this year, not necessarily all of our positions hired. Um. So we're, we're looking to have an update on this at the end of October, which will better reflect where those things landed.
That's great, Ross. Thanks so much for that um, really thorough explanation. Let's go over to Mike for a question.
Ross, congratulations. That was great. Um.
I had good practice last night at budget and.
Yeah, yeah.
So thank you to you, Mike.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question that is really an extension of, of some of the questions that I asked yesterday, so I apologize to the. Rest of the school committee. This seems a little bit disconnected, but I just want to be clear that. These fifteen line items are our major categories, right? So if we go back in last year's budget. The FY twenty one, FY twenty budget, we'll see those same fifteen categories so that we can compare one year to the next. And while we don't shift between these line items, there are lots and lots of smaller line items within these categories. Which at any given time, at any given month in these updates could be plus or minus, and that's why we rely. Exclusively on the budget versus actual of each line item rather than the individual. I guess subline items within these categories. Does that sort of capture it correctly?
I, I think so. I'm going to share my answer, then certainly would want Pat to add in if that's different, uh, or she has something more to share. I think what we're, again, coming into this over the summer, uh, and certainly as things have, have ramped up the last couple of months. So i- in looking at the, the smaller pieces with, with, within these big, big lines. Um, those would not necessarily go up or down because as we expend them, they just, they just go down. Um, we wouldn't put revenue into them per se. Um, the revenue goes into the district as a whole. Um, so, correct. I, I would also add too is that it's important to keep. An understanding of where we are having surpluses or deficits within these fifteen. And then we can look deeper in it. So for example, and I've used facilities tonight, and I'll use it again because I used it last night. That's a perfect place where I can have a conversation with Rob Frieswick as I create this report to say. Okay, you know, Rob, what am I, what am I seeing here? Talk to me about what's coming up. You know, I'm learning about the, the propane. Propane is not a fixed cost for us. Based on, on the, the owner of the tank and how that was set up originally. That's something that's gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna know more about as the year goes on. Versus oil, we've locked that in. We can use that as projected expenditure.
So just as a follow up then. While we don't really track deficits in those smaller line items. We do identify whether some of the allocated money is unencumbered. Is that correct?
Right. So if we have something that's, I think what you're saying is some places we encumber something at the start of the school year. Like we will encumber the entirety of our, our phone bills.
Right.
For the year because we know we have a fixed cost in that. We know what it's going to cost for the school year. We create a PO, we encumber that money for the school year.
Right.
Something else, and again, I'll use propane. Propane, we don't, we, we can't. Encumber that because we don't know what that, what that rate or, or that, um, that cost is going to fluctuate throughout the, the winter.
Right, okay. Makes total sense. Thank you so much.
Yep, and I would just add too that we do encumber salaries as well. We know, we know what the salaries are going to be based on the people who are currently working when we create these reports.
Thank you so much, Ross.
Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. My question is regarding what, and I have to apologize because I know that I've seen. The line by line detailed breakdown of this budget, but could you remind us what's included in the system wide bucket? Is that? Like administrative salaries and?
That, that's part of it. Um, there's other pieces of it. I don't have it open in front of me, but uh, as a reference point for you. Um, this is Cohen, and certainly the public, if you go into the, and again, I think this goes into the questions about where are we going to post these things, but the, the current voted budget. All of the lines that are within system wide below that are all published there. So I could pull it up if you give me a, a moment. Um.
No, that's.
I can tell you what's in there. I can kind of give you an overview of what's in there. Um. All the assessments that we have for charter school and school choice, they're in there. If we um, under budgeted. Um, based on the new um, rates for two thousand twenty three, that information would be there. Um. Any um, salary increases that weren't budgeted would be in there. Um. Or that were unintended, whatever changes in salary. Um. I'm still here. Um. You know, what we hire somebody in, in the offices for at a different um, cost, whatever. It could be anything like that. Um. Some um, paper costs um, have gone up. That's a big um, hit to our department, believe it or not. Um, transportation. Um, transportation should be pretty much a fixed cost, but um. The um, assessment for McKinney Vento could be coming in higher. So there are a lot of different uh, line items in that um, professional development. Um, that. Um, may or may not be um. For district wide employees. People that have them like for the um, administrators that would have it in their contract. We do budget for that. It isn't, we don't budget um, as if everybody's going out on PD every day. You know, or every week, we budget according to what's in their contract and that anticipating that not everybody will use it every year.
Thank you for that explanation, and I, I like the addition of the last year's numbers. It's helpful comparison. Thank you.
Agreed.
Superintendent Downing and I were talking today. Um, you know, and I, I shared this last night with budget and warrant. It's certainly also a planning tool. As we go throughout the school year up until the point where we submit a budget, uh, we can use this to look at how things are going this year and not rely just on. FY twenty two as a place to, to, to understand how, how our expenditures worked out.
Great. All right, uh, one more, Ross. Or was that the end of it?
Uh, the other thing that's provided is the cash.
Pat, you want me to stop sharing my screen? Yeah.
And actually, Maureen uh, has her hand up. A quick question, Maureen.
Yeah, I, I've just been doing it compared to the budget, and I just wanted to.
Yeah, I've just been doing it compared to the budget and I just wanted to point out that it looks like. The FY twenty-three approved budget is not on the district website. The FY twenty-three budget book is there, but the, the budget is not.
Okay, I can work, I know, I know it exists in the. School committee minutes and those packets, but let me work. This, the end of this week to find out a place and, and where we're going to put it. That matches what's on their previous years.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to point that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Maureen. Alright, so do you want to share the treasurer's cash?
This is treasurer's report for June. Going to share it now.
Being here.
There you go. So basically this report. The year-end cash report for, I think she, did she include all of them? It's actually June, July. August. And September. Oh, I wasn't sure she had September in there. Basically, you can see there isn't much change from month to month. You might see a big increase and that would be during August. And that's because that's when all the, the assessments come in. Kind of going backwards here. So July, you can see that we're pretty much spent down.
The assessments come in quarterly. Is that right, Pat?
That's correct. They come in quarterly. And these are the bank, you can see that the bank totals are on. On the bottom here, you know, what sits in each bank. Some of the, the, the bank accounts are underutilized. One would be like, well, not underutilized, but don't have very much money and, but they have a specific purpose because they're. Easy for the, for the school lunch program to deposit. And then the, the student activities are kept in a separate account. Because they're, we're custodians for student activity funds. They. Basically being a custodian, we just take care of their money and let them spend it. According to how they should be spent. You can see the TD Bank is still, it's really low. We haven't closed that account yet. And there is a reason why that and Vicki Chadiya may be able to tell you. Vicki Chadiya is a district treasurer, but there's a reason why we haven't closed that quite yet. Whether it's there are checks or something that have not been turned over to the state or something that haven't been cashed or something. I, I don't know, something like that. But she can, she could give you a better idea as to why we haven't closed it. Is there, does anybody have a question on any particular month? I don't want to keep bouncing up and down here.
Yeah, let's go to Maureen first.
Okay, Maureen.
Hi, Pat. I, I know we covered this briefly at the budget and warrants meeting last night. But when we're looking at the, the total cash that moved on these bank statements. That's not going to tie to the total amount of the warrants that we're signing off on. Because the grants that are also being factored in, right?
Correct. There are grants. There, there's state revenues that come in. So you're not, not going to see that on a, an expenditure report that you get every month. So, and, and they, they generally send us money every month, the state. Basically, one tenth of what their funding is. And then they make adjustments come January and February based on enrollment and charter school, school choice, whatever. So that can fluctuate too.
Got it. Thanks.
There's a lot of moving pieces regards to that. You could never sit down and try to balance anything unless you were in my job. Or Ross's job now.
Got it.
Let's go over to Amy.
Thank you. Is the OPEB line item, is that the, the balance that we have reserved for the OPEB liability? That is, or?
Let's see, it started out in Ju, in July. At seven ninety-one oh sixty-one eighty-two. And. It's still about there.
But that's what that.
Yes, that's the, that's the balance we're carrying in the liability trust.
Right there.
Thank you.
On business and operations. Alright, seeing none. One more time, Pat. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Service and for all of your expertise. We are so appreciative. And we wish you the real, really, really wish you the very best in your retirement and your late breakfasts. And your many adventures.
And my commute on four ninety-five.
We feel like we're trying to keep you every last available minute at this meeting.
Well, I am going to move the agenda over to our next item and that is our student representative report. I can see that we have a new member present with us and I'm going to actually turn it over to Dan. Dan, I think you're with us. There you are. Hi, Dan. Dan, would you like to perhaps introduce your, our new member?
Yes, of course. The elections just happened recently. The new representative is Hansi or Hansi. She's, she's got her camera on. She's just waved. I'll let her introduce herself.
Alright, and can you just tell us one more time how you like to pronounce your first name?
Yeah, I go by Hansi.
Hi, Hansi. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm excited to do this. So when the opportunity came to, to like apply for this position, I kind of jumped right into it. I was really excited. So I'm glad to be here. I'm excited to see what you guys do.
Awesome. And I know that Dan is a senior and we know a little bit about Dan and his high school life. Chess club champion and varsity soccer player and other things, but can you tell us just a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, sure. I'm a junior. I'm the class twenty twenty-four president. And I am the president of Active Minds at the high school.
What is that?
It's a mental health awareness club. So we strive to stop the stigma around mental health and change the conversation.
Well, that's pretty impressive. We are so happy to have you here. So I will now open the floor to you guys if you have a report for us.
I'll, I'll start with the senior sunrise. That was, it happens last Friday. It was really nice. I saw a nice gradient in the sky when I went. It was pretty cold, but I had my, my fur hat on. I don't know if you saw on the Instagram. I was on the Instagram post apparently. And then after that, we had. We have some Stucos planning, some spirit events. One of those is being that lip dub I referenced last time. School hype video. Not sure when that's coming out. I think it's in November. Yeah, November. And we also have a Halloween spirit day on Monday, the thirty-first. And we have some emails that went out for homecoming on November fifth, so looking forward to that. I'll turn it over to Hansi.
Thank you. We also have parent teacher conferences that are coming up the week of the seventh. So deadlines for grades for everyone is the fourteenth, but for seniors, it's on the seventh. We also have Veterans Day for the long weekend coming up on the eleventh of November. And we have a food drive that's being organized from mid-November throughout the holidays. And the middle school band night was this past Friday, so all middle school bands attended and played. I think that wraps up our topics.
Fantastic. Thanks so much, guys. Does anybody from the committee have any questions or?
No, I'm just want to welcome Hansi and say we're really excited to have another representative. A student representative on the committee because the, your voices, I don't know if we say it enough, but hearing your voices during these meetings is really. One of the highlights for me and it's really important. So thanks for volunteering your time, both of you.
Ross, thank you.
Great. Well, we look forward to seeing you guys next week, but if you would like to skedaddle, knowing that you likely have lots to do. Please feel free, although you are always welcome to stay, of course, but we thank you for your report.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, guys. Alright, everybody. So let's go over to unfinished business. We're going to be taking a vote on policy JJIF dash R athletic concussion regulations. And. Maybe we can start with a motion.
Sure. I will move to adopt revised policy JJIF dash R as presented.
Second?
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion on the revised policy as presented? Alright, seeing none, I will take the role. I vote yes. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Alright, that was unanimous. Thank you very much for that, everybody. Policy Subcommittee, well done. I know that you guys are working hard on all of these policy matters, so we appreciate that. We're going to move over to Subcommittee Reports at this time. Let's ask Budget and Warrant to start.
Sure, happy to start. We had our last meeting last night as a matter of fact. It was a late one, but fortunately we had sufficient attendance. We treated the bulk of our session as sort of an orientation, both as a way to. Clarify what it is that we do for those of us that are familiar, both Pat and Ross were in attendance. And also for our new member, Maureen, but it was probably just as useful for me to hear. Some of the rationale and the reporting strategies for the district. We rehashed our, our goal for the year and our key action steps. Unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to talk about or to go into more detail. Mr. Mark Karen's entry plan, but we'll do that for next time around. And it looks like there may be some future collaboration between Budget, Warrant. And Personnel Subcommittee, but I suppose I'll, I'll keep that secret until we, we actually do the collaboration. But very successful meeting last night, in my opinion.
Great, thanks, Mike. Communication, any report? Who's, so I guess Ms. Vessels will take this on.
Yeah. So yeah, we have not had another meeting. Our next meeting is November seventh. So we'll have more to report after that. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Amy. And over to the NRHS School Building Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sorry for stepping on you there. Our next meeting is scheduled for November fifteenth, District Committee. Up to date, the preferred schematic report has been submitted in advance of the October twenty-seventh deadline. We should expect final comments and review to be completed by the middle of December. In the meantime, Superintendent Downing and myself, along with Ms. Viverito and Ms. Cohen are making the rounds at our local select boards. We were in Stowe last night. We were in Lancaster last week. And we have Bolton upcoming with Ms. Cohen and Superintendent Downing to give them a status report. We've been warmly received at both boards and we hope that will continue in Bolton. But on that, that's all I have to report at this time. Again, next meeting, November fifteenth.
Great, thanks so much. Personnel? You're muted, Mike.
How about that? Personnel will meet, I believe, in the first week of November. So since our last meeting, we had no update.
And let's hear from Policy. Have a report. Oh, well, Karen's not here, so. Amy, anything else?
Yeah, so we met and there's a couple of new policies. One of them we're going to bring before the school committee on November ninth. It's on gifts. It's a pretty straightforward one, but the one on budget D, I think it's called, that's going to take us a little more time. So that's not going to come up probably until maybe the end of November or into, into December.
Okay, so it looks like more revisions to D because we handled a bunch last year.
Yes, there were quite a few. So, and we're meeting again on November fourteenth, so we're going to tackle some of that then. But there was like information that we needed to gather to do that.
Great, thanks, Amy. Um, Maureen, anything on audit advisory?
No, no update yet.
Okay, great. Dear J, Sharon said that there is no report there. Karen is not here to report out on CPAC, but I do know that she and our CPAC Chair have been in communication. And they are looking to find a meeting that Karen can attend. The Regional Agreement Amendment Advisory Committee, we've talked a lot about this at this point in this meeting, so there's no real major updates. We're just waiting for Desi to get us back the next round of edits. And, you know, Peter Mello has sent back his thoughts, our attorney. Sent back his thoughts on various things. So again, just waiting. And we're hoping that they will be able to get those to us in the next probably seven days. So more to come on that. At this point, guys, it's time to identify items for the next agenda and I can. Share the. Planning calendar. So November ninth is our next meeting. This is what we have scheduled for new business. Obviously, the superintendent's report will be filled in.
Madam Chair, if I may? I don't want to frighten you with all those presentations that night. The principals will be presenting their school improvement plans in one consolidated presentation that is ten minutes long.
Fantastic. That is exciting and I, I really am personally looking forward to hearing all the good work being done there. And I see Maureen's hand. Go ahead, Maureen.
Yeah, I don't know what the right time is for this, so if you want me to push it off to another point, let me know. But the attachment that we went over when we were talking about budget that listed all of the student activities and clubs. That was a, an amazing list, especially from Lancaster. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to discuss if there can be. Kind of sharing of ideas or like getting those clubs that they have in Lancaster, sharing them with Bolton and Stowe. To try to get the same opportunities for all of the kids across the district. Don't know if that's a topic for the next meeting or if it's, if it's something. That we can talk about since it's attached today. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so Kirk, do you want to speak to that at all about this notion of creating unity across the schools?
Yeah, we have that on the strategic plan, actually, that we'd like to see like programming. Clubs are tricky. Clubs are different. So clubs are, are led by our members that are, are employees that. Because these clubs need sponsors and whatnot, so you cannot forcibly compel anyone to run a particular club. So oftentimes your, your clubs are subject to where the interests of the students are and having a sponsor in that building. That is willing to do that. So it, it's a little tricky at times to, to create that kind of alignment. But what I can share with you is that our principals have been working with us and our leadership council on. Building-like programming across all three schools. So that's something that they're continually working on. And continually having conversations about so that we can lift good things happening in other locations across our schools.
Kirk, is, are these sorts of things that, I know that staff are stipended, you know, there are many clubs that. Are on the stipend list that perhaps don't run or et cetera. Is this something that a community volunteer could, could, you know, come to the school after? Is this something that, um, a community volunteer could ball, could, you know, come to the school after school hours to run a club as well?
Um, the clubs, I, I'm going to turn to Ms. Maroni on this one for, for a moment, but the clubs, to my knowledge, are clubs that are run by our, uh, employees. Do we have examples of, of parents, perhaps, uh, Mr. Mul Karen or, or Ms. Frank could jump in there, examples of parents running clubs as well?
The only thing that, um, comes to mind is it wouldn't necessarily be parents, but there might be people involved with the drama program.
Yes, that is true. That is one club where it is, yeah.
But there's nothing, there's nothing prohibiting parents from kind of picking up something that students are interested in that we just, you know, teachers, I know a lot of teachers already run a lot of clubs.
Well, part of the work that we're also doing is, and that we'll be working on more with our clubs, is looking at, you know, what are our goals and the things we're trying to achieve across the school system and how are those clubs aligned with that? Particularly around voice and choice with students. So these are things that, that we're constantly having discussions about. Uh, but what I would encourage people to think about is, um, we, we, we also want the clubs to reflect what the needs and the wants of the students are in those buildings because they really are for the students. And when the students raise up their ideas about what clubs they want in their own school, uh, that really is powerful. So we, we, we want our clubs to really be focused on what our students are telling us, uh, through their own voice and choice.
I see Amy Vessel's hand.
I had two questions, sorry. Um, the first one is about a club. I've, have we looked at, I know there's some clubs, um, like at Florence Sawyer that are, uh, really strong academic clubs like that math Olympiad or whatever. Um, but it's only offered in the morning, so kids that can't come to the morning program um, are not able to do that. Is there any talk about looking at that where kids?
We haven't gotten that granular in all of our, our clubs, uh, in those offerings. I, you know, for those types of questions, I think those are great questions that take directly to the principles of those schools as they're the ones that provide the oversight to those clubs.
Okay. Um, my second question, Leo, is just, are we going to add that, um, gifts policy onto the next meeting?
Yes, you want to do the first reading at that point?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Any other things for, um, the next meeting? Uh, Mike?
Sorry, uh, this is actually a, a, a more specific question and clarification. Um, I see that one of the bullets says Superintendent Evaluation P D. Uh, is that, um, is that something that Personnel is spearheading for that, for that particular date, or is that just a conversation about P D?
No, so I wonder why that's there as well. Um, is that perhaps a date that we had set, and so I threw it in here during a Subcommittee meeting?
Okay.
I think that we discussed doing some type of, um, survey, something. Would that be it?
Yeah, so Mike, remind me when Personnel meets next?
Um, I believe it's the seventh. I'd have to check my calendar.
Um, yep, that's what I have too. So on November seventh, perhaps we can um, shore that up. I think Amy, indeed, you're right, that's designed to be kind of a a beginning, like a pre-assessment of our goal. And then the formative evaluation, professional development for the committee will come maybe in December at some point. But we can, um, shore that up and add to this planning calendar then. Any other things that anybody wants to see added or even put in the parking lot? Alright. So I am going to just try my hardest to stop sharing.
And that'll be that. Um, I think that get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any seconds?
I can second that again.
Thanks, Amy. Um, so let's take the roll. I vote yes to adjourn. Shondor.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Alright, everybody, we're adjourned. One more time, thanks, Pat.